There will be on the public hearing, so you will still get a chance to speak if you want to, but there cannot be voting on that until May 15th.
May 15?
Well, there'll be another public hearing in May or... Now, this is the public hearing for the May vote. We have 14 issues on the public hearing, and you will get a chance to speak on each one of them if you want to. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes; I'll be timing you. If you have a representative who can speak for a group, that would be great. Be civil, be accurate in what you say. We also ask that you address the council, not the audience. Item number one is to amend the future land use plan of the city of Lebanon, Tennessee, by changing unaddressed Carroll Bend Road, unaddressed Lebanon Road, 701 Old Lagarto Road East, 241 Old Lagarto Road West, and unaddressed 3650, 3675, 3681, 3688, 3695, 3729, 3761, 3835, 3940, 3980, 3970, and 4050 Highway 109 North from IC Industrial Commercial to CO Commercial Office and medium-density residential. Would anyone like to speak on that issue? Item number two has been pulled. This is the changing unaddressed Blair Lane from rural residential to agriculture to RS-12 medium-density residential in Ward 6. Would anyone like to speak on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Tracy Parks on behalf of some of the owners here. I understand, I think you announced beforehand, there'll be an actual public hearing on this before the vote on May 15th. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure, just very briefly, would state that you're aware, and that this has come before this council with no recommendation from the planning commission. It's been failed to get a recommendation coming out from planning. And on behalf of the landowners, we have been consistent, may have been consistent, in the message that they would like the council to consider when you do have a vote on this, which is simply that R-12 zoning is not appropriate, given the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. R-20 is the most restrictive of the current zoning that surrounds this. You have a built and long-established neighborhood to the north, which is at R-20. Neighborhoods to the east across Blair Lane, which is R-20. You have RR zoning, rural residential, to the south, and we have soon-to-be-developed property to the west that has been approved for R-20 zoning. So it's a compatibility issue, and that is something that we hope that the council will consider, because I think that's what you're called upon to consider as you vote on this. I have other matters that I will bring to the attention of this body, I think, in May. I don't want to keep your attention too long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Just state your name and address.
I'm Mike Cox. I live at 1704 Blairmont Drive. I was the developer of Blairwood Downs, and when we did that, I know Jeff can tell you that we had some pretty major water issues in that area, in Chica and Indian Hills and all that area right there. I had to build a big bridge across Blairwood Downs, the drive going through, and three houses had to have major bridges. And at that time, when we did that, they were supposed to go in and put a bridge at Cook Drive and a bigger one at Blair Lane. That's been 25 years ago, and it still hasn't been done. And I mean, I just don't see us going there and like let somebody downsize these houses when they made me stick with what was in the neighborhood. And I never once asked to downsize them, because I didn't want to do that to the neighbors. But I just feel like we need to make these people stick to what's in the area. And I know we had on the other agenda, they were voting on changing that zoning. Originally, that zoning was low-density, but somehow, back several years ago, I think it was in 2002, it got changed without any of the input from the neighbors or anybody else. And, you know, I just think this is something that this council needs to look at and try to keep this neighborhood as consistent as we can. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just want to wait till May. Item number three is to amend the future land use plan for the city of Lebanon, Tennessee, by changing unaddressed Blair Lane from medium-density residential to low-density residential. Would anyone like to speak on that? Item number four is to amend the official zoning atlas of the city of Lebanon, Tennessee, by changing 25 Palmer Road from CS Commercial Service with planned unit development overlay to CS Commercial Service. Would anyone like to speak on that? Yes, sir.
My name is James Pauling, and I live at 107 Ewing Court. Recently moved here up to Montana State. And I'm addressing the council here today, because I've gotten conflicting information as to what the removal of the PUD will do for that zoning area. And my concern is not so much that it's being developed or that they want to remove the PUD, but to make sure that what is put there is consistent with the neighborhoods in general. I've heard everything from sort of a low-end gas station to other items, some of them very high level or high scale. Thank you. But the largest concern which I'd like to bring is to make sure that whatever is put in that commercial area, that they do not allow a new cutout of the Palmer Road, which currently, I believe, in the actual plant, it does have an old plat cutout for farming vehicles to hit Palmer Road, but they have not indicated whether or not they are going to, meaning they, other developers, are planning on making a cutout to a Palmer Road, which would, in essence, bring a lot more traffic to Ewing Drive and the other areas there. And so we also, and I'm not representing anyone, but I have contacted many of my neighbors in the area, and there hasn't even been, at least expressed to us, what, if given the PUD removal, what type of change that they'll actually socially put there, what sort of structures will be there. And so because there isn't that information available yet, I would just be hesitant in allowing the PUD removal until you guys get more information, change yourselves on what's going on. Thank you.
If you would contact Paul, how do you... He can tell you what is allowed to go into that particular zone.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Paul and I are going to have a discussion during my comments, so...
Oh, okay. Item number five is to amend the official zoning atlas of the city of Lebanon, Tennessee, by changing unaddressed South Hartland Drive from CG... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Everybody wants to get done. I'll be brief. I promise I won't use all three. Mike Ryan, Russ DeSoto, just representatives of the developers of River Oaks. Just real quickly, a few points, and the gentleman who spoke before me is exactly right, because I've heard all sorts of rumors about what's, and I've read it on social media, and you read just about anything on social media. Mr. Medwick, who is with me tonight, doesn't know what he's going to do. What we know is there's a 12-year-old PUD that's, it's been in effect, it will not develop the way it was originally envisioned back '05-'06. What is allowed is dictated by the underlying zone, revert back to a CS zone. He would love to have upscale, there's whatever he does, he would love to bring a Whole Foods. I've heard that talked about. Unfortunately, he didn't get to decide that. Whole Foods comes where they come, and there's a whole list of checks that have to be checked off before they come to any community. The last issue is about the roadway connection to Palmer Road. Mr. Medwick has no desire to make a connection to Palmer Road. Having said that, just to make it clear, that is the city's purview. The city gets to make that decision. He does not. Thank you.
Anyone else? Item number five, to amend the official zoning atlas of the city of Lebanon by changing unaddressed South Hartland Drive from CG to CS for Ward 4.
Just wanted to remind the city council of Paul Porter, Planning Director. We do have requests to pull this item today and bring it back in March.
Okay. Item number six is to amend the official zoning atlas of the city of Lebanon, Tennessee, by changing 211 and 213 Senior Street from RS-6 to DMU, Downtown Bixute, Ward 2. Would anyone like to speak on that? Okay. Items number seven, eight, nine, and 10 are all pertaining to 1642 Rutledge Lane. Item number seven is adopting a plan of services for that area. Number eight is annexing property at that address. Number nine is to amend the official zoning atlas for that address. And number 10 is to amend the future land use plan. Would anyone like to speak to any of those? Item number 11, antwoy, is adopting a plan of services for annexation of unaddressed legal road to be added to Ward 4. Item number 12 is annexing that property. Item number 13 is to amend the future land use plan, and item number 14 is to amend the official zoning atlas. Yes, sir.
Item 12, if I may have a clarification, on the notice of the public candida station...
Sir, could you state your name, please?
Rob Park. Item number five, Public Works. Item number C, the owner developer will be responsible for completion of a major thoroughfare project, extending Sullivan Bend from Callis Road to Lead Award. I'd like a clarification of how that would happen.
I was impressed that this was all the planning and planning.
The applicant has proposed that they were going to extend Sullivan's Bend all the way over to Callis Road. We would expect that to happen with this application.
Thank you. Anyone else? On the agenda, we are going to pull items number 18-5558, 18-5559, and item number 18-5561. We also have one drop-in, which will be 18-5580. I'll be in order. You'll stand. You lead us in preparation.
God bless you. Most righteous, gracious Father of heaven, we again thank you, God, for giving us service to communities where I live in the night. And thank you, night, dear Lord, for both termed out to City of the City of Jerry Fordham, Lord. And yesterday night, thank you, God, for your wisdom, Lord, and things we've done to help build this city and make it better and stronger and best place in the world to live in and work in, Lord. Thank you, me blessed and lucky, and thank you for our military folks that served the night, to take us all, stay the hard way, Lord, and spread the gospel. Yes, now we pray. Can you send me a prayer? Amen. Thank you, Father.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you.
Joey Garmack?
Here.
Brad Burton?
Here.
Rob Sesternino?
Absent.
Dick Bryan?
Here.
Sorry, Chris Crown?
Here.
Rigsell?
Here.
There you have it.
We have two sets of minutes to approve. One is from January 2nd, 2018, and one is from January 25th, 2018. Do you have your own motion? Motion in second, any discussion? All papers say aye? Aye. Opposed? Minutes approved. At this time, we have communications from the citizens. You're welcome to come to the podium to speak on any matter that you'd like to, address the council, be courteous, all the things we've said before. State your name and address when we're done with. I've seen anyone. We'll close that portion of our minutes. This is a communication from the mayor. I don't really have anything. I don't, we've had some, a lot of sickness in City Hall and across the city. Hope everybody's feeling, I hope nobody in here is sick and contagious. That's all right, that. Now, we have reports from our council.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Jeff and Regina for helping with some problems that came up in Ward 1 over the past couple of weeks, and Regina's fast response. I don't know if she's in here or not. But thank you for all of that. And as far as Don Fox Park, it is supposed to be complete, according to the director of Parks, in a couple of weeks, and I believe the mayor's office is planning a grand opening, reopening after that.
Right. We'll have a date, but we'll look at the last one.
I think y'all all will look forward to seeing that. I went down there with the mayor myself and saw all the stuff that's been put in. It's really nice, and it's going to be really great for the citizens of Lexington, and that's all I have.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up on a couple of things. We've got some folks here, I think, tonight. I see some of them back there. Medina, I see you. All the folks that were there tonight, that were at the meeting that we had over in West View Acres at Fairview Church, could you raise your hand? I'm kind of glad you all are here tonight. We appreciate you letting the mayor and I and Paul Porter come out a few weeks ago to discuss the apartment plan that we're considering, and the issue that you brought to our attention, and I certainly plan to address that a little bit later when we vote on that. But we definitely want to move the city forward. I don't think there's any question about that. But we certainly want to protect our neighborhoods where we can, and I certainly want to protect the folks over there in the West View Acres subdivision from getting more traffic than they have to, so we wanted to acknowledge that. Also, I've gotten some comments recently. Anybody here tonight that lives on Westland Drive or across from Crowley Avenue? Yeah, okay. Got some emails here recently, communications. There are communications going on within the city right now, the mayor's office, the police department. You know, I don't think there's a magic wand that we can wave to make everybody stop speeding. I wish there was. In fact, it probably would have to be used on me from time to time, as would anybody in this room, probably. But we want to protect the children playing out there in the yards, and we want to make sure that people are safe in your neighborhood. I know it is a cut-through between Hickory Ridge Road and Blair Lane, and it is a safety issue for some folks out there. I've been out there and observed what's going on. I think Mike Justice has also been out there. I'm sure the mayor has as well. So we've got a couple of different things that we want to try. We want you to know that we are listening to your concerns, and we want to do some things to try to help you. So I want you all to know that. Other than that, I think, appreciate everyone coming out tonight and your input and your concern for your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Concerning speeding in our town, and I've spoke on that many times, I know those of you that have been here have heard that, but it is a problem all the time. And our police can only be certain places. You know, they're never going to be everywhere all the time, so I don't want you to think that they're not where they need to be. A lot of times, all it takes is a call. I remember there was some speeding going on in a neighborhood near mine, and one of the neighbors called the police, reported that, and it wasn't long, they were running radar out there, and they ticketed about five of them. So sometimes, that's all it takes to slow people down, because a lot of times, especially through these neighborhoods, it's the same people most of the time. You know, they use that as a cut-through. So that's just a recommendation, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, but Mayor. First of all, I would like to tell you one, that if you go to the City of Lebanon website, we have a recycling survey on there. There's a lot of people in Lebanon who take part in our recycling program, and we'd like to know who else is interested in doing that. So if you could go there and answer just a few questions, it doesn't take long, and tell us what you think about recycling as we're going to the future. It's something I support. There are a lot of people in Ward 6 who take part in recycling. It saves us time and waste going to the landfill in Hookersboro, and it's something I think is good for the future of Lebanon, so please go check out that survey. Also, there are a lot of people who are in Ward 6 tonight, and I'm glad you're all here. There are a lot of folks who live in the Blair Lane area, and I know for everyone, this has been a long and laborious process. It's been going on for a long time, the rezoning request, and obviously, tonight, it's been preferred as a request by the developer. I was hoping we could vouch this tonight. It's, situation's gone on too long, and surprisingly, tonight was going to be the first time that the city council actually saw it. You know, for the past several months, you know, I've talked to a lot of neighbors, people who live over there, and so obviously, I know a lot about it. I've had a lot of meetings about it. But officially, this is the first time the city council was going to take it up. Several weeks ago, we had a work session where it was discussed, and then that meeting got canceled, and that's why it was put tonight, and now it's been deferred again. And to kind of explain things, how work sessions work, you know, they are information meetings for us, for us to talk about the agenda, talk about, you know, some of the things that are going on, and ask questions to our city planner and other people who are involved. And the way that usually works is that, you know, the public is invited to attend, but it's just us talking. There are no public comments. And the only way that, you know, someone who is not officially with the city can speak is if they're invited, and that night, the attorney for the developer was invited to speak to us. I'm disappointed that same night that the attorney for the neighbors was not invited to speak. So I'm glad he was here tonight. I would forward his comments in May when this comes back, because, you know, I always like to hear all sides of a story before I make an decision. I feel like that at that work session, we only heard one side of the story, so I'm disappointed in that. But I am glad everyone showed up tonight, and please come to the next public hearing and be here and voice your concerns then, too. Paul? Did you come through the microphone? I want to ask you a question about Blair Lane first. Mayor announced that Ward 18-5559 is being pulled tonight. Why is that being pulled?
We had a conversation about it. You know, I've been a little bit uncomfortable with these two things tracking together at the same time, so I just gave my opinion that I prefer it not to be. It's really up to the city council and the mayor to decide if it comes back before the May 15th. But just because of the quick pace and everything, you know, I was a little bit uncomfortable voting on that before the rezoning vote, so...
Okay, there you go.
Can I ask what?
There's been a lot of confusion in reality with this, as it's going through right now at the planning commission level and just in talking, that that could affect this application. The application was in before the request for the land use, future land use plan change, so I really do feel like we need to keep that distinction clear, really just trying not to get the city in trouble in any way, so...
Hold on. We have another Ward 6 rezoning tonight down Palmer Road. First, I would like to say that I've had some people ask about the notification process on rezonies. Could you explain that? Because, you know, people who don't go through this a lot, you know, it's new, so could you explain that?
Yeah. So about a week before the planning commission meeting, we put the signs out, and we sent out the notices to the neighbors. We sent out a notice to all the neighbors that touched the property that's being considered, and that includes what's across the street. We didn't really hear a whole lot at the planning commission meeting, but directly after that, we were getting notifications, we were getting calls, saying people missed the meeting, and they're kind of upset. Just so you know, what the state requires is that we notify for the public hearings, and that's what we do. So the sign was put out over a month before the public hearing was scheduled in January. Obviously, that one got snowed out. Because we had an extra Tuesday, we were able to advertise for this one about the same time. But you put out a notice before the planning commission, we put out the signs a month before the public hearing, and that's what the signs are for, but also before the planning commission. Planning commission's the first of three hearings of an item, and then this will be the second hearing, and then there'll be another hearing at the next state council meeting. So we do, we go above and beyond what we're required to do, and we try to get as much notice out there we can, with any reason.
You and I have met a lot about this PUD. Can you talk about exactly what this PUD calls for?
Yeah. The PUD really has kind of a strip and wall section on the front, which is the commercial part. It originally, when it was first proposed, called for the ability out of gas station. That was reduced a little bit, whereas the only gas station you could have would be with like a Kroger-type development, and so limiting gas stations is a big part of the PUD that got approved. So taking the PUD off, this front section, would really take it back to just what the CS zoning district is, and it would allow some things that wouldn't be allowed now, light gas stations, fast foods, although that would have been allowed in the PUD as well, but also opens up residential uses that currently wouldn't be allowed.
So it has basically like a purpose, shopping center roof?
Yeah, that would be, that's kind of what the design was. You know, we didn't have tenants in there, but that's what it looks like.
Yeah, that's, yeah, not tenants, but with that type building and out parcels in front. It does a lot of gas pumps like Kroger.
At Kroger, but not individual gas stations outside of the...
All right. That's all I have. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have one item, and that's Ward 18-5568. Second reading, approval of our item transfer for the grain and litigation department. This is for machinery and equipment. Motion in second, any discussion? All papers say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, item number one, I have asked Mike Kurtz to serve on the Lebanon Beer Board, and I would like to get the council's approval. Motion to approve. Say. Motion in second. Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 18-5557, first reading, to amend the future land use plan of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee by changing unaddressed Kable Bend Road, unaddressed Lebanon Road, 701 Over Guard Road East. Mr. Burton. Gager. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Two items have been pulled. Ordinance number 18-5560, this is first reading, to amend the official zoning atlas of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee by changing 25 Palmer Road from CS Commercial Service with Lee, Plan Unit Development, Ole Lake to CS Commercial Service in Ward 6.
I'd make a motion to send this back to planning.
Sure.
I'd like to discuss that, too, please.
Okay.
I don't usually like to do that, but in this situation, you know, the developers are, they have a plan that doesn't work anymore, as it's tried or resolved, and I really feel like that they should be able to change those building sizes to fit in the tenants that they want. But I've talked to the representatives of the developers, I've talked to our planning staff, I really believe that there's, there are other ways to get there, other than us pulling this PUD tonight. There's other options that will also help the neighbors, and so I would really like them during this time to look at those other options.
Motion in a second to send this back to the planning commission. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number six has been withdrawn until March. Item number seven is ordinance number 18-5562, first reading, to amend the official zoning atlas of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee by changing 211 and 213 Cedar Street from RS to downtown mixed use district. Ward 2.
True.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 18-2158, first reading, adopting a plan of service for the annexation at 1642 Rutley's Lane.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? I didn't ask for discussion, but if you have any, go back up, do it. Okay. Resolution number 18-2159, first reading, annexing property at 1642 Rutley's Lane.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Period. Ordinance number 18-5563, first reading, to amend the official zoning atlas of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee by requesting zoning approval of 3.2 acres at 1642 Rutley's Lane.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 18-5564, first reading, to amend the future land use plan of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee by changing 1642 Rutley's Lane and several other addresses.
Motion to approve. Say. I figured you wanted to read all that.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 18-2163, first reading, adopting a plan of services for the annexation at unaddressed legal road.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 18-2164, first reading, annexing property at unaddressed legal road.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 18-5569, first reading, to amend the future land use plan of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee by changing unaddressed legal road.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ordinance number 18-5570, first reading, to amend the official zoning atlas of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee by requesting zoning approval of 78.8 acres at unaddressed legal park.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 18-2167, to purchase two new vehicles and one used truck for the police department.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 18-5571, first decision. It choked up the rest of that name. First reading, to approve budget amendment for the police department for the purchase of free vehicles and equipment.
True. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 18-5572, first reading, law enforcement line item transfers for the fire, public safety, public works, and police department.
True. Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 18-2165, to rescind resolution number 17-21.
No move. Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'm not going to play all of the songs, I promise. But what I would like to do is that, I know the Cass High Alumni Association has concerns, and in my role as city historian, I would like for you and I to meet with them and see if there's somebody that they would like for to be named after.
That's good, Andy. Would you step in at four?
I would.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Final resolution is 18-2165, in support of the Lebanon Senior Citizen Center Valentine's Bank.
True. Say.
Discussion.
Okay.
There's always been a cardinal rule that you don't serve alcoholic beverages in all the city buildings. And I don't know how this came about, but this would set a precedent in any city building that wanted to serve alcohol, and somebody leaves an alcoholic exposure, it has a writ, you know, the city has a legal liability. Am I right there, Andy?
Liability will exist anytime we're negligent, for sure, Fred, I'll tell you that, but I think attorneys, for the establishment, that serves or sells alcohol for reasons of same concern, so. But yeah, you are correct, there could be liability issues if something happened.
This is the senior senator, their request to allow them to serve wine at their Valentine's Bank.
They can drink all the wine, just like a can of whiskey.
Don't see that happening for the Y. Any further discussion? Are you ready, Paul? All in favor say aye. Opposed? All in favor say aye. All opposed, say no. 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 Those happen. There is one more, this is a drop-in, this is ordinance number 558.
Motion to approve. Say.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Period. We adjourn.